All right, it is seven o'clock. Let's call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance is in flag of the United States of America. It is your republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Siri. All right, Mr. Mayor, do you have something for the agenda?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Council. If we could remove 7.4 from the consent agenda. There's an update that the city attorney would like to share with the council related to that item.
Okay.
And then if we could move 8.1 under business items, bond refunding, to the last item.
Okay.
Of business items. Paul Stein is double booked, and so I told him that we'd push him to the end of the agenda.
Okay.
He'll be joining us via Zoom, so.
Sounds good. All right, with those amendments, can I get a motion to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
A motion by Councilmember Henry?
A second.
And a second by Councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right. Next up is community comment for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. But I think everybody's here for something that is on the agenda. So with that, let's move on to presentations and reports and get an update on the Jonathan Carver Parkway Improvement Project Construction update. Aaron.
All right, good evening, Mayor Council.
Good evening.
Tonight, I will present to you a brief update on Jonathan Carver Parkway. And I am happy to present tonight that there's a big red X over the Stage Two for JCP. So that means that full closure period is officially over, and the roadway is now open to through traffic, which is a good thing. So there's still lots of barrels on the road, obviously. It's still active construction zone, so please, everyone, take care, take lots of care with traveling through the area. But the road is open to through traffic at this time and will be so for the rest of the project. So some key updates, as I just mentioned, Stage Two is complete, so traffic is flowing through the corridor. No planned detours for the rest of the project. In addition, the majority of the trail work is also completed. The key point here is that access to the elementary school is in place, both north and south of the school. So kids looking to get to school will be able to use the trail systems in place at this time. Roadway and utility work continues south of the fire station on the new southbound lanes. There's storm sewer work happening now, as well as roadway widening and construction. So that is why there's the crossover in place just south of the roundabout right now, as crews work to finish up remaining work on that side of the road, so. And then lastly, you'll notice a lot of the areas are being restored permanently at this point, and the landscaping work is about to begin here soon in the next few weeks. So you'll be seeing trees and shrubs, plantings, all that stuff will be happening here shortly. And I will end my update tonight with a few pictures. So this is at the roundabout. This is the striping subcontractor working on striping in the roundabout here. They're laying out the crosswalks. This is a pretty interesting photo. They're paving the new trail that's going through the new underpass. So hard to believe you can actually get a paver in there, but you can. So they're paving inch and a half lifted pavement through the culvert. And then here's a picture, east side of Jonathan Carver Parkway, their hydro seeding area. This is, I believe, north, or this is near the new underpass, Ironwood Underpass as well. And here's a shot just looking south. This is on the east side of the road. You're looking at the intersection of Ironwood Drive in this picture. And then lastly, this is kind of a gloomy day, but wanted to note, this is the retaining wall just near the underpass up there as well, looking towards Monroe Drive. So as you can see, lots of things coming together here in a hurry. It'll be a couple more months yet, but all plans are to have the project wrapped up by the end of the year here, so. Questions?
Yes. You mentioned that the majority of the trail work has been done. What is not done?
So there is a trail segment on the west side of the road from Monroe Drive to the 212 interchange that's still closed at this point. And then there is a segment that is in the southwest quadrant of the roundabout near the Carver Square businesses that is still closed at this point, so.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Since we're going to be, we're late season dormant planting some of the landscaping, do we have a warranty on this if any of them don't make it through the winter?
Yeah, so that was one of the benefits of having the city landscaping contract, is we were able to do our own warranty period for that. On conventional state, state A projects, they don't really have a warranty per se, but the city will have a planting warranty for all that, all the plantings. Yep.
Any other questions? It looks great, Aaron. I drove up there this morning because I wanted to see how things were flowing and how people were doing on the first day of school, and folks were using the underpass, and it looked good.
Yeah, it sounded like things went good on the first day of school as well. So one of the turn lanes is still closed. There are not two receiving lanes going northbound on JCP. So they're still only using one left turn lane. So if you're going eastbound Ironwood to northbound Jonathan Carver, there's only one left turn lane open. Ultimately, there's going to be two, so it's even going to flow better after the project is done. But I did hear that things went pretty good today, so that was good news.
Good. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
All right, we have no public hearings tonight. Let's, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilmember Henry?
A second.
And a second by Councilmember Sarah. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. All right, business items, moving up to 8.2, liquor license application for Harvey's Bar and Grill. That's good.
Excuse me, Mayor, yeah, we should hit 7.4, yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. You're going to love hearing about the fireworks, though, trust me. Okay, 7.4 for the consent agenda. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So just a quick recap of what we were sorting through this afternoon. When I looked at the packet, I came to the realization that the entity that signed the agreement that's in your packet tonight was, it merged with a different company, and that's the company that Simotes has contracted with to produce the fireworks display for this weekend. And so that, that new company is actually the company that ensures the fireworks display, lists the city as an additional insured and other things. And I talked to the owner of that company, and he's willing to amend the agreements that are in place to make sure that the city is listed as an additional insured and should be indemnified by them, all those sorts of things, just to fill that, that risk mitigation void that was there. And so they're going to do that. They're not sending the updated agreement until later tonight. He happens to be on vacation, and it's his document. I don't even have a word version of it to make changes, and he's actually on vacation this week. So he's going to put it together later this evening and send it over to me. So the, the agreement in the packet is not going to be utilized anymore. But instead, the motion tonight that I think would be the appropriate way to proceed for the council would be a motion to approve the requested fireworks permit conditioned on the applicant Spark One Inc. executing a revised agreement that meets the requirements of the city attorney and further authorizing the mayor and city manager to execute said contract. That way, we can finalize things tonight or tomorrow, as soon as I see that from him, get it over to the city to sign everything. He can sign it electronically where he is, and then we will be able to address that issue. Like most insurance companies, this insurance certificate provides that it's only, the additional insured is only, clause is only valid if it's required by an agreement. If we were to sign the agreement that's in the packet tonight, it's with a different entity, so it wouldn't be required by an agreement. So we just have to fix that and then have everybody execute things kind of last minute, but that's where we're at, and we're going to make sure it's good to go for Saturday. Otherwise, I know there'd be some people that are pretty upset.
I would like to make a motion to approve, as you stated, because that was very long. So I'll make that first motion.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Henry.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Henry. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right, Tiffany. Aren't you glad you heard about the fireworks?
Yes. It's like my break at work.
All right, the liquor license application.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm here with Tiffany Gracowski. Did I get that right?
You got that right.
All right. She prepped me today, so. She's applying for a liquor license for Harvey's Bar and Grill. The appropriate background check has been completed by the Carver County Sheriff's Office, and no citations were found. The license fees for this application will be prorated from the date of October 11th to June 30th of 2022. At that time, she will apply for the upcoming license cycle. So after city council approval tonight, all required documents will be sent to the state of Minnesota's Alcohol and Gambling Enforcement Division for final approval. So what we're looking for tonight is a motion to approve a new liquor license for off sale, on sale, and Sunday for Harvey's Bar and Grill from October 11th, 2021, to June 30th, 2022, including the extended existing patio area.
All right, any questions? Or want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license application for Tiffany Gracowski, Harvey's Bar and Grill.
Do you want to read the motion?
I'll make a motion for approval of liquor license for off sale, on, on sale, and Sunday for Harvey's Bar and Grill for October 11th, 2021, through June 30th, 2022, including extended patio area.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Henry.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember Mock. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Welcome. All right.
Thank you.
All right, 8.3, a land use application for the Preserve. Ms. Smith?
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are reviewing preliminary plat for the Preserve. We'll get into some details, have a discussion, and then ask for a motion on preliminary plat only tonight. So some fast facts, so we become familiar with the project again. The builder for the Preserve is Brandle Anderson. Matt Olson is here tonight from the company, if you have any questions specifically for him. Something exciting is that they are new to Carver, so it's a new market for them, a new builder that we haven't seen in Carver previously. There are 66 total units, so 66 new single-family homes with the project. And a couple important pieces that I'll talk through tonight. The extension of Monroe Drive, which is needed for both Timber Creek, which we've previously approved, and the Preserve, and then a trail and sidewalk system that the council had some comments on when concept plan went through. So where we are in the process, there's the typical planning process that has concept plan, preliminary plat, final plat. But in Carver, it seems like there's always a couple additional steps. So for this one, it was annexation, so bringing the property into city limits, which was previously approved by the city council in the state of Minnesota. And a noise study was completed. So I'll go into detail. It was included in your packet, a riveting read, but I'll give you the really important details as we move through. So where we are in relation to Carver today, the project is directly west of Meridian Fields, the D.R. Horton project that is directly south of Highway 212, north of Timber Creek and the extension of Monroe Drive that we recently approved with Phase One of Timber Creek Final Plat, near Carver Elementary in the north corner of Jonathan Carver Parkway and Highway 212. So on the screen right now, there is just an illustrative view of what the project looks like. So something that we talked about pretty extensively at concept plan was the importance of having a trail through the wetland area. So you'll see highlighted in yellow, there's a trail carved out in that area. Something that often gets discussed, but I want to alleviate some concerns now, is that the trail has been, right now, preliminary, preliminarily approved by the Carver County Water Management Organization. That was one of the big questions I had, is this trail possible? Could it be sustainable in this location? So the applicant will be required to get full permit from that group for this trail, but generally, all signs are pointing to, yes, it will work, it can be a trail in that area. Pink through this area is sidewalk, and then red is trail along Monroe Drive. So a really connected project, getting to Carver Elementary, thinking about students that potentially could live on this site using the trail system to get to school. So development details. Access to this project are strictly from Monroe Drive and Meridian Fields. I'm going to get into details about the public hearing at Planning Commission, but there were several township residents that had questions of, does this project access from 212? What does that look like? What are safety concerns? So this project has no direct access to Highway 212. All traffic will move south and then out towards Jonathan Carver Parkway at this time. Will continue west once we continue to develop that direction, but for now, largely south and east to hit Jonathan Carver Parkway as the main collector to get out of Carver. Other details that are important, there is obviously the trail system, but no park. So no park dedication will be received for land, so we'll do cash in lieu of for the entire project. So roughly $4,000 per unit at 66 units is roughly $300,000 for the project to be added to the park dedication fund. Something that's becoming really popular, and if you looked at the city's newsletter this month, there was information about some conservation signage that we've been trying to be pretty proactive about with some of the new developments that have conservation areas. So a couple of examples, Oak Tree has it, Meadows at Spring Creek has it. So putting signage at each lot corner, letting property owners know essentially, your property stops here, the area beyond your property is for conservation. Largely will be untouched by the city, so that's something that we're trying to stress pretty early, just because there can be unmet expectations for a lot of property owners when they come in thinking it might look a little different. So trying to get out ahead of some of those expectations to say, it's a conservation area. Largely will be untouched, that's the intention. This project is a bit unique with a couple of exception pieces. I'll talk through what that means. The prices ranging at this point, I believe, are $450,000 to $600,000. So not something that we can directly comment on, since it's not tied to land use approval or zoning, but just something to note. And then we'll get into some details about the noise study. So if you'll recall, the property directly east the D.R. Horton project was the first flavor of the noise study along 212 west of Jonathan Carver Parkway. So it was required due to the adjacency to Highway 212, knowing that 212 can be a little noisy from time to time. So for the noise study, field measurements were completed on site. So they come out with receptors, they put them on the site, and then they take data for extended periods of time to see what it sounds like in the morning, at night, during the day, during non-peak times. So for the noise receptors, they were placed at 200 feet from Highway 212 and 450 feet from Highway 212. And the locations at 200 feet from Highway 212 exceeded the noise limits adopted by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency or the MPCA. So that group says, for a healthy environment, noise cannot exceed this level without mitigation. So at 200 feet, the red flag went up, we need to do some mitigation here. We're at 450 feet, the noise levels did not exceed the MPCA requirements. So the five lots that are circled here will require mitigation. It's kind of what we expected, they're the five closest to Highway 212. So in the landscape plan, you'll see that there is extensive birmingham in that area along with landscaping and then construction materials. The three of those things together bring the levels of noise to a safe level for those five lots. So the noise study essentially says, we need to do something for those five lots. There's mitigation that will be required to be met through preliminary plat and final plat. Jumped the gun on that one. So on the screen now is the preliminary plat. So what this means, it's the layout for the lots shows typically what the lots will look like. We can see a little bit of wiggle room between preliminary and final plat, but we don't anticipate major changes. So two things to talk about now are the exception pieces. So you'll see in the northeast and the northwest corners, there are two carve-outs that are not included with the project. So two homeowners that have decided at this time, they're hoping to stay, not choosing to be part of the development. Something to note is that in the northeast corner, so the property that's directly serviced off the frontage road, is that you'll see some kind of gray outlines in this area. So what we call that is a ghost plat. And what that means is that we anticipate those lots will be part of the Preserve at some point, and we've thought about utilities for that area. So when that property owner chooses to come into the city, we'll be able to say, yes, there's capacity for you, yes, there's a hookup there. So we essentially say, this is what we think it will look like. It allows us to have at least a plan for when that person does choose to come into the city. So two things about that, the property is not currently annexed, so they will continue to be township residents. And when they do choose to move forward, there will need to be a plating process, so preliminary and final plat for those three lots when they choose to come forward. We don't know when that will be.
Can I ask you one question about that?
Yeah.
So when those, let's say they sell, do they have to be immediately annexed into the city? Or can they just sell from egg to egg to egg if they want?
They can.
Okay.
Yep. So should they choose to move forward coming into the city? It would be a tough sell to do something like a comp plan amendment to say, yes, we're suddenly going to rezone it to be a commercial project just when we know it's likely going to be part of this project. So we try to be at least forward-thinking at that point, but should the property owner choose to stay there in perpetuity? They have that ability, they have the ability to sell their house as is as well. And the exception piece on the northwest side, so the carve-out here. This one was tricky, because if we required that area to be serviced by a street, the development kind of fell apart because it's so far north comparatively to where the road hits. So that area, we believe, has the potential to develop when the property west develops with the lensen property, so potentially a cul-de-sac could extend into that area. We didn't believe it made sense for this project to ghost plat that area just because it's so large and we don't know what the lensen property could look like some point in the future. So again, two exception properties continue to be in township, will require annexation. We have the ability to think about the northeast corner pretty easily, because it makes sense, where the northwest is just a little bit of a question mark to us right now. But we anticipate when we continue moving west, that area could develop as well. So something else to think about this area, those five lots that require mitigation for the noise study, it's going to be anticipated that these three lots additionally will need that same standard, so landscaping, birmingham, construction materials, just due to the information we know about those five lots and the proximity to Highway 212. So the south portion of the preliminary plat is on the screen now. Again, shows general layout, what the project will look like. A really large part of this project is that wetland, which will be city-owned, city-maintained, but again, conservation area with pretty minimal maintenance. So a little bit of a teaser for the rezoning that you'll review at time of final plat. The subdivision, again, is 66 total lots. Net density is 4.39. Again, I talk about it a lot with this group, is that we try to hit that three, the three that's required by the Met Council. So coming in at 4.39 makes that pretty easy, gives us some wiggle room. If we had a lower-density project this year, it would provide a bit of balancing. Something a bit unique about this project is that they are going for straight zoning. So we often see R2 PRD, or Planned Residential Development Overlay, where they ask for some wiggle room on our zoning ordinance. This project is coming in with straight R2, which Meridian Fields, which is their neighbor, came in at the same just straight R2, no PRD. Additional projects that have R2 zoning, Oak Tree, Timber Creek, Copper Hills. So kind of the entire area west of Jonathan Carver, with the exception of Carver Crossing, is zoned R2 for that base zoning. So typical setbacks, lot sizes are 7,000 square feet. Front yard setback is 25, side is seven and a half, rear is 20. I could have looked at the screen, I was really, I was going for that one. Tree preservation and replanting. So the project doesn't have a ton of trees at this point, because it is a farm field with a large wetland in the center. So not a ton of opportunity for just natural growth in this area. Generally, it's about a removal, about 100 trees that will be taken out with the landscape plan adding roughly 300 trees at time of full build-out. Many of those come in birmingham along those five lots, along with birmingham along the outlets. So the exception piece will have a pretty heavily landscaped area, and then each lot will have a bull of our tree. So the Planning Commission held the required public hearing at their August 19th meeting. Again, we had a few property owners from the township that came. As part of that requirement, a letter is sent to property owners within 350 feet of the property, letting them know about the meeting, inviting them to provide comment, and notices also run in the Chaska Herald 10 days prior. The three township residents, again, just questioned if the project would have direct access to Highway 212. The three that attended the meeting accessed their property to 212, and they were just sharing concerns that it feels dangerous and unsafe right now. So I think that their questions were met with the appropriate answer that this project will not access onto 212, because it is kind of a scary spot to be getting onto the highway. Some examples of what the Brandle Anderson Homes will look like. I would say it matches the Carver market pretty well. Typical three-stall garage, generally two-story model. So thinking about the projects that exist there today, the D.R. Horton, Lennar, typical projects, I think that this project will blend well with the existing inventory we have in Carver today. So next steps tonight is just reviewing preliminary plat. Upcoming reviews are rezoning to R2 and then final plat, which is the final approval for the project. I'll open it up for discussion. I'll invite, Matt, do you want to come introduce yourself to the group? Come on up.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Matt with Brandle Anderson Homes. This will be our first development in Carver. As was pointed out, we are a home builder turned developer. In order to service our customers better, we felt that there's a need to look at land and develop it and then build our homes on it to keep our prices down and as affordable as possible. We started this endeavor as far as building and developed lots of our own back in 2013 and have done many projects in Lakeville, Rosemount, Savage, Prior Lake, and are hoping to expand to other markets and Carver being one of the first ones. I mentioned, those are our typical single-family homes. Over the past year, prices have changed dramatically. I was hoping when we first looked at Carver, that will be into, in the high threes to mid-fives. Things have changed since then, and so right now, that is accurate, probably in the mid-fives to low-sixes, but hopefully, things will rebound a little bit with pricing out there so we can get things a little more affordable. I'll take any questions.
Any questions? Go ahead, Chrissy.
I have a couple of questions for you. So when I'm looking at your housing stock here, it looks, they look very nice. They look like they're all two-story homes. Do you, do you have other stock that is something maybe a single-family? Or I guess, I don't know, is the topography open to walkouts and lookouts in the back? That is more of a, I guess, ranch style or something that isn't a two-story?
Yes, we offer many different style of homes. What we do have are set product lines. And so what you see in here is, yeah, primarily two stories or is two stories. However, I think this site is going to lend itself to some split levels. And so that's a different, we have a couple of different split level plans that our homeowners can choose from. And then we also have some rambler plans as well. So we have a variety of two stories, ramblers, and split levels that will accommodate this site. And I think there's a mix of split level lots, walkout lots, I'm not sure how many lookout lots there are, and then some flat lots.
Okay. Okay, so then as a, as a prospective buyer, I could come in and talk with you, here's the lot that I want, but I'm, you know, maybe a two-story isn't what I'm looking for at this point. So I could, I could move on to something else. You have another, another build that you could do for them?
Correct.
Okay. Aaron, this may be more of a question for you. So as, 212 is now expanding into be four lanes. So what they're doing right now is the monitoring for the noise at the levels we have now. Do, does Carver County have expectations on increased traffic levels after, or excuse me, after the four lane is completed? And are we going to be falling short on our buffering, I guess, or whatever mitigation we have to do?
Sure. So that was a question at the Planning Commission meeting as well. And what we can do is we can monitor existing conditions when the project is approved. So it is tricky that we know there's going to be a project. My hope and my impression is that when Highway 212 goes, goes to four lane, I think it might actually be a quieter product, because traffic will not be breaking as heavily in that area. I think traffic will move more efficiently. So there could So there could be potential that highway two twelve gets really slammed in the next couple of years. But at the time of approval, this project met the requirements. Jim Wiegand with the planning commission also made the comment that, uh, potentially with the introduction of electric cars, highway two twelve could become quieter as the market on vehicles changes a little bit. So.
But it's usually the semis that bring them.
Yes, definitely. So I'm hopeful at least that the construction to four lanes in that area might make it a little bit quieter actually because the traffic can move more efficiently through that space.
So the frontage road that runs along there?
Mm-hmm.
Help me understand. Is that in front of this also?
So the frontage road will service the two exception pieces.
Okay.
And it will continue. Let's see if I have a good view of it.
Okay.
Let's see. I know it's there. That's probably the best view.
Okay.
So the frontage road right now is technically a township road, but the city maintains it. So the two exception pieces will continue to access. But again, no traffic from this project will access two twelve. When these two properties come into the city for development, the frontage road will cease to exist.
Okay, okay. But right now with the two twelve expansion, the frontage road is planned to stay. Where is that?
Correct.
Okay.
For access for those two lots, yes.
Okay.
And the, sorry, the flag house, that's the exception for Meridian Fields right now.
Okay. Um, I might guess my final question for now then is the names that I'm seeing on here for the roads. Are those placeholders right now or are those expected to be names?
So those are proposed by the development team. If you have feedback, we're happy to take it at this point.
Okay. So you said that there wasn't a lot of wooded area there because it was mostly farmland. So, and then I looked at the landscaping plan for what's going in. And so Tamarack is a little maybe off to me because there weren't tamarack stands there before that. And there's not going to be tamarack stands there after that. Um, I think that because it's a unique area with that wetland and we're calling it the preserve, that possibly that main road may have, um, a, a, a name that might be more fitting with a preserve way. I'm not stuck on something, but I just, something to do with the preserve might be nice. I do like Old Oak Road. Uh, Town Court seems a little boring, but, uh, there's not that many houses on it either. So I guess I'm fine either way on that one. But I just think Tamarack Road just doesn't represent uniqueness of that development in that area right there.
Tamarack Highway.
Vito. That's all I have for now. Thanks.
Okay. Does that mean anything from you?
No.
Joy?
Um, the yellow trail that's being shown here, so is that planned to be, um, a paved trail?
It is, yes.
Um, is there any opportunity? I, so my point of reference is, I think it's called Edenbrook Conservation Area and Eden Prairie has a big giant wetland surrounded by a bunch of residential. And they have a combination of trails that are dirt as well as boardwalk that are through a wetland area like that. And it's such a cool, unique space that when the wetland grows up, you can't see anybody on the trail. Like everything is taller than humans and it's just a really neat place. And I was just wondering if it could be perhaps a little bit more natural.
Sure, we could definitely explore it with the C C W M O. I will say, uh, the potential for a boardwalk, boardwalks are extremely expensive.
Yeah.
So to have that as part of a project, I suspect we would need to have park dedication as part of that. We can definitely explore different trail options with the C C W M O.
Yeah. I like that, that we're planning to put that trail around that area just so that it's not just the residents that get to experience it, but.
Okay. That was my only question. Lori?
Could the trail encompass the entire wetland instead of just the half a square?
Uh, so in this area, it gets really tight with the wetland. There's not space for it unfortunately. So it was the goal to have the entire wetland, but it didn't check out with where the project was wet unfortunately.
I'm a little confused by that answer, Erin. Um, you said it didn't fit?
There's not space here to have a, a trail.
There's not space because of the homes there?
And the lot sizes that are required. So to meet the zoning ordinance, the lots need to be seven thousand square feet. So the lots.
So there isn't enough land to pave.
Correct.
Essentially. Boardwalk. More grants, Erin.
We need you to write a grant for the boardwalk. I made sure my microphone was on so it was recorded.
All right, Lori?
No, no other questions or comments.
Okay. Um, Joy, thank you for asking my question about the boardwalk. I have a little bit of a different perspective. Boardwalks are lovely, especially through swampy areas, the screening that the marsh provides. But, um, there is one not far away from my in-laws' house in Grand Rapids, Michigan. And they went through one heck of a rebuilding process. And a few years later, it's already starting to fall apart. So I think because of the nature of it being in water, they're really, really, really hard to maintain. Um, and super duper expensive. So, um, that was my question, but with the concern of, gosh, I hope this isn't a boardwalk. Cause I just see the signs. Um, my only other question is for you, Erin. At what point in the process do the conservation signs go up? Cause I know that that's been a little bit of a pain point for folks who think they're buying a big backyard and realize that it stops where that dust starts.
Right. So it's a little bit tricky. Typically is after sod. So the home is usually constructed. People typically are living in that area, which makes it tricky. So we have, uh, really actively been working with the Lennar sales group to let people know that these lots here will have that conservation signage so they can portray that message to the buyer. Um, it is tricky though.
I wonder if we couldn't get those signs in earlier and just work the sod around it. Because sometimes folks are in their house for a year.
Mm-hmm. Right.
That's just my two cents.
Um, with that, if there aren't any other questions or comments, I could get a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution one thirty-nine dash twenty-one approving the preliminary plat for the preserve.
We have a motion by council member Henry.
A second.
And a second by council member McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. All right. The preliminary plat, uh, is approved. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Um, okay. Are we ready to talk about bond refunding?
Yep.
Okay. Um, going back to eight point one bond refunding with Mr. Steinman and Mr. Merrick, I assume.
We're just gonna cue, uh, Paul up here on the.
Do you have to leave at eight or be home by eight?
Uh, maybe start at eight fifteen.
Okay. So we're doing it right.
I have to leave at eight, yes.
I was in the cloud here, so I'm just gonna have to. Talk amongst yourselves.
You need to open your phone.
It should be saved in your winter if you choose to.
Had to reset it.
It's funny, my cheek today, guys. I keep that in.
That's super fun.
Dad jokes, anyone? You know what? Mr. Anderson, we have not, uh, done a formal introduction. We could do two truths and a lie if we're, oof, oof.
Oh, you prepared me for it, so that's cool.
Can I put you on the spot?
Sure. Um, okay, let's see. Um, I've lived in Belgium.
Okay.
I've.
Or Facebook.
I've survived for a week on only eating space food, like the dehydrated food.
Okay.
Or, uh, or and I have gone skydiving.
Say no skydiving.
Okay. As a viewer playing along at home?
Yeah. Which one do you think is a lie? It's a good mix. I don't think you survived on space food. A lot of people don't think you survived on space food.
Okay, what do you got?
Three, so.
Oh. All right.
There's a couple winners. Um, I have not survived for a week on space food.
You've never gone camping before, dehydrated?
Yeah, but I bring, you know, normal food.
I think it's space food, like the stuff you buy at the museum.
Yeah.
Store that's like ice cream.
Exactly.
Chery.
Right, we're ready.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right.
Paul?
Yes, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Super.
We can't see you.
And I'm, and, and I'm up. Do you, if you want to see me, you can see me. But I can't, I can't promise it's gonna be beautiful.
Oh.
You're in your car.
I think you can.
There I am. No, no problem. So I'm up and ready to go. So you folks offered some bonds this morning. And the amount of a million four hundred and forty thousand dollars. And on those bonds, you had two bidders and probably only two because it's a relatively small amount of bonds, a million four forty. But you had two bidders and, uh, the interest rates, uh, appeared to be well within market rates. So, uh, and in the end, your, your savings proved out that these were very good bids. Um, the winning bid was Raymond James and Associates. Bid a true interest cost of one point three five percent. Um, and Raymond James, even though there were only two bids, there were a handful of other underwriters that are buying parts of your deal as part of the Raymond James, um, syndicate. So again, that true interest costed was one point three five percent. And then since this is a refunding, uh, when you get a premium bid and there's a premium, it gets automatically applied to how much you borrow. Um, so you don't have to borrow as much. So your par amount, uh, on this refunding went down to a million two hundred and forty thousand. And the best, the best news is how much did you save on this refund? And I'm just pulling that up here. There we go. Or give me one, give me one second here. So this was a refunding that was done entirely for savings? I'm holding everybody, everybody's on the edge of their seat, I'm sure. And someday I'll find the residual here, refunding summary. Okay, here we go. Here we go. So we did, we did this refunding entirely for savings. Um, it's structured out to the exact same term as the original bond. So we didn't change any of the term. We didn't apply any cash or anything like that. We, we just refunded or refinanced the original issue for savings. And, um, based upon the post sale true interest cost that was bid, you saved, uh, one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. So that is net of all of your costs of issuance. And that number is actually converted into today's dollars as well. So a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, which looked to be about thirteen thousand dollars a year through, um, through the, through maturity of these bonds, which was twenty thirty-four. So a good refunding, yep, since about thirteen grand a year through twenty. So my recommendation is to proceed with awarding the bid to Raymond James and Associates. And I'll maybe just make one other quick comment as I normally do about the rating. You folks and, and your, your team, uh, participated in credit rating call with Standard and Poor's. And affirmed your double A rating with a stable outlook. And that basically means that they don't intend to change the rating for at least, uh, the horizon of two years unless something significant happened. But just a couple of comments in the rating report, which I know that, that you have seen too. But, um, they always talk about a downside scenario and an upside scenario. It's kind of a summary. So, um, on the downside scenario, they indicate they could lower the rating if your budgetary performance were to weaken substantially, reducing available reserves, or if sizable debt and high carrying charges were to lead to budgetary pressure. That's the downside scenario. The upside scenario is that they could raise the ring if debt were to decrease while the property tax base grows and diversifies. So just a couple of select comments from the rating report, which again, I know that you have and it is really, um, valuable and recommended reading. So I'll step back and if there are any questions anyone has, uh, but my recommendation is to proceed awarding the bid to Raymond James and Associates at a true interest cost of one point three five percent.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Steinman? Erin Nunn, I want to entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution one forty dash twenty-one providing for the issuance and sale of one, is it still that number?
No, it's one point two four.
Okay. One, correct? It's the one two forty number?
I don't have the resolution in front of me. There's a, there is an amended resolution sent by bond counsel this afternoon, so it should be in front of you.
Um, okay. Uh, for the sale of one point two four million.
Yep.
Of general obligation improvement refunding bonds, series twenty twenty-one C pledging for the security there of special assessments and levying a tax for the payment thereof.
A second.
A motion by Mayor Johnson and a second by council member Ma. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Simon. Appreciate your help.
Thanks, Paul. Awesome.
Very good.
Have a good night.
Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
Thanks, you too. Um, all right, with that, uh, city manager, can you take it?
Think we got a.
We still have eight point.
What am I missing? Oh, I'm sorry. Um, I'm sorry. Turn. Um, oh, that's why you were wondering if I was all out of order. Okay, eight point four American Rescue Plan Act. Maybe we're not doing as well on time as I thought, Joy.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. So, uh, we've talked about this in various forms and formally at, uh, work sessions through city manager updates. There's some background on the American Rescue Plan. In part, it's provides aid to cities as a response to the pandemic. Uh, the city is expecting to receive just over, uh, five hundred thirty-three thousand in, uh, what they're calling A R P A fund, funds in two installments. So we already received one in twenty twenty-one and will receive the second half in twenty twenty-two. We have intended use, an intended use budget within our long-term financial plan, uh, which you saw earlier this evening. Um, it's also listed below, um, in the memo to the council, um, a variety of infrastructure projects related to our utilities. Um, in addition to some, uh, pagers and radios for the fire department as a means to respond to the, the pandemic. There are our four criteria listed as well as, uh, some, uh, additional information provided by the League of Minnesota Cities. Uh, in preparing, uh, the memo, um, also, uh, have this reviewed by the city attorney and Steve McDonald, the city's, uh, consultant finance director. Just with our experience with, uh, kind of the first round of what I'll call COVID dollars. There's just that, I think, an extra level of, um, scrutiny about how those funds are used and if they are applied correctly, the, and, um, probably goes without saying, but the Department of Treasury doesn't have, they don't have like a checklist of yes and no that needs at its guidance. And so, um, kind of a belt and suspenders approach to this is wanted to have this listed as an intended use. These items would still come back to the council for, uh, approval, uh, depending upon the budget. And won't all these exceed the twenty thousand dollar threshold? So you'll, you'd see them in one form or the other. But you see them listed into two years just based on the, the funding amounts, uh, that we'll receive in those two, in that, uh, over the two years. So again, we already see funds for this year and then we'll receive funds probably in June of twenty-two for the second half. So, um, have a sample resolution or a model resolution that we took from the League of Minnesota Cities, um, that we use for our template. Uh, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Um, when I'm looking at the resolution, um, I did mention this to Brent earlier today and, uh, asked where the, how the resolution came about. And it, it is one that comes as a form from the League of Minnesota Cities. Um, I'm uncomfortable with, uh, some of the wording in the first two whereas. The first one talks about the number infected and the number, um,
The first one talks about the number infected and the number killed over, over the course of the pandemic. Because these numbers, to me, are moving models, I don't think that actually that's necessary to be stated in our resolution. I would be more comfortable if it just started with, since the first case of coronavirus, and then the disease has impacted every part of life, because we know that. I'm feeling uncomfortable with putting numbers in here over what, what can be reported somewhat differently in different areas about the number of people who've been affected. The second one also, when we're looking at the results of the pandemic, cities have been called on to respond to the needs of their communities. Possibly some other communities have responded in a different way than we have. When I'm looking at the statements of treatment and vaccination, that's been done by our medical community here, not as something that has been required or put forth by the city. So to me, that one actually, in order to make this resolution read and, and get to the point of what we're looking for, I don't actually think that that paragraph in itself is, is necessary. I would prefer to see that one removed, and then the first one to be amended. I don't know what the rest of the council thinks about that.
My two cents are, I, I'm with you on number two, because I, I agree with you, and I'm looking at the criteria up there, and that sort of piece didn't really apply to the city of Carver. However, the first part, I'm assuming, is related to when this American Rescue Plan Act was approved by Congress and the funding was allocated to this was because of these stats at the time. That's what I'm just guessing that it was tied to, and so that's why this is the template, because this plan is because of this data at this point in time. If, for instance, frighteningly, you know, like it gets way, way worse, and we have bigger and more giant numbers, there'll be another act, and there'll be another set of data and funding that would come out. That's what my guess is, so I don't have as much heartburn with that first part, but I agree with you on the second piece, which is not applicable.
I have some comments. I think that you bring up great things, Kristi. I agree with the second whereas, you know, that it's not the city that's taking the initiative on those things, you know. But on the first one, I like having the facts in there. Somebody who likes to go look up an old resolution once in a while, and I'm thinking just, you know, generations to come, they'll be like, why did they do this, or what was going on? You know, just to always remember what was going on in history at the time, that's what led us to this, you know, like Congress to come up with this, and then this, you know, us also taking it in action to receive the funds. So I'm all right with the first one, with the whereas, but the second one, I would like to see taken out.
So as much as I'd love to wordsmith this to death, I wonder, you know, really good points, Kristi. I, I like the second whereas because it has the city's role, but I wonder if we don't just remove treatment and vaccination of COVID nineteen, recognizing that we did do some stuff to help prevent the spread of COVID, but we, you're right, did not do vaccinations or really treatment in the most literal sense.
I would like, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, just getting out of the wordsmithing business for a second, and I think, I feel like, Kristi, maybe you've asked this before, but Callie, the twenty-five thousand dollars for radios and the sixty-five for pagers, that's the full cost that'll buy us whatever we need there?
We have ten thousand dollars left in our budget, so that will be up there.
Okay, thank you. That was my question. Glenn?
I'd like to see the second whereas stricken. I see no point in that being there. The first one, I understand Lori's point about it being a historical fat, numbers that were given to us at the time, so I don't have a problem with that if people are historians. But no, the second one, I'd like to see stricken.
So since I was the one who brought it up, I'll just comment that I, I, I still think that the second one should come out. The other comments from Joy and Lori and Glenn, and I guess, Courtney, you maybe didn't address this one specifically, if you did, but I'm fine with that staying in. If that seems like it's important to the rest of the group, then I don't have any issues with that, but the second one, yes.
Okay, now that we're done wordsmithing, any questions about?
Well, sometimes we have to wordsmith when we have resolutions.
The Rescue Plan Act specifically.
No.
Nope. All right, that and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution one thirty-seven dash twenty-one, accepting the Minnesota Rescue Plan Act funds and establishing, establishing an intended use budget while removing the second whereas from the resolution. Is that good?
I'll second the motion. We have a motion by council member Mauch and a second by council member Sayer. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. All right. Thank you. Now, with that, city manager communications? None. Joy?
Nothing. I have nothing.
Nothing today. Kristi?
Steamboat days, obviously, is a weekend.
Yes.
A few things happening around town, so I'm, in case anyone is watching, one thirty, the streets are closing down this year, so it's a little bit earlier than we had in the past, but we wanted to get the lunch crew out, so.
Is that Thursday?
That'll be Friday.
A Friday, okay.
So Friday. You'll start to see some motion and things happening later on Friday night, but yes, then Friday morning, things will be delivered, and we start rolling in about one thirty, and then we start the whole thing off, parade on Sunday. I want to say thank you to city staff, preemptively, city staff and Public Works and Fire, and we've, they've just been fantastic to work with through this, so we're having a good time. Looks like good weather. We'll see. Yep, that's all I have.
We had a planning commission meeting, went over the preliminary plat for the preserve that passed on a five oh vote. I would like to make a comment about all the pedestrians on Jonathan Carver Parkway. Please use the trails. I saw people walking up the middle of JCP in the, in, in the median.
Yeah, I saw people crossing on top of one of the underground passes, kind of like, it's open.
There's, I mean.
Hello.
We put a lot of money and time and energy to build walking paths and bike paths for people. Please use them. Even if it's still under construction, there's liability issues if you fall and, or run into a sign with your bike, stuff like that. Use the trails and use your brains when you're up walking the paths. It's just, some of the stuff I've seen, I just sit and shake my head. But anyway, that's all I have, and I'm looking forward to this week.
Me too. Have we put, pushed out on social media about the underpass being open? Okay, we have, maybe we could do one more?
Let's see, just a couple of things from me on Friday, the twenty-seventh. Zach, and now I'm totally blanking on his last name, from Tom Emmer's visit, or Tom's, Tom Emmer's office came to visit the city of Carver. So kind of like when the congressman came, we did a little bit of a smaller scope tour where we walked the levee, and I told him more about our project. Zach has been more of my day-to-day contact on this, so he was the one who told us that we were in line to get the congressionally designated funding from Emmer's office. So I think that, and then we have a handful of weeks left in the farmer's market, so please keep going there. They've kind of seen a little bit of a drop-off in traffic, and I just want so badly to see that be a success, so please, please go to the farmer's market. With that, if we don't have anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by council member Henry.
A second.
And a second by council member McKnight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, thank you all, good night.